Let's call this meeting to order. 5:02 Roco.
Alex Cantú present.
Terry Atlantas present.
Armin Garza present.
Teresa Cantú present.
Espio Chau present. I do declare a quorum. Dr. Science.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. It will please stand for the pledge of allegiance at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Any public comments?
I believe we still have no public comments. Is that correct, Dr.?
That's correct. No public comments.
We'll move on. Thank you to discussion on the 2020-2021 proposed budget.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Joel Trevino, our Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Finance, will lead us in the discussion of the proposed budget for 2020-2021. Thank you, Joel. And Joel has a presentation he's going to share with us on the screen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Science. Today we're discussing the budget presentation, work session number four. If I'm not mistaken, you should have received the presentation booklet also. But I will be sharing it on the screen. Let me just... Okay, this is work session number four for August the 12th. We'll be talking about certified property values, the average daily attendance trend, and the 2021 budget draft number four. Some of these items we've discussed previously, and I will touch briefly on them. If we go on to page number three. This is the property values and related information. And it's information for the past four years. Right at the very top here, this is the property value. We were at $2.3 million. And now on the 2021 certified values as given to us by the appraisal district, we're at $2.76769,000, a million dollars in property values. That represents a... That represents an increase of 5.98% from the previous year. Okay, our MNO tax rate for this, for the 2021 school year, we are turning in at a rate of a dollar and four, 1.0444. We had a new requirement this year that we had to submit our our certified property values to TEA, and TEA would certify the maximum compressed rate. Our tax rate for this coming school year will be at a dollar 444. Okay, based on that rate, our local collections are estimated at $27,000,670,000. 977, okay. When we base our, how we earn the money from the state, those that property values for use for state collection, we're at $2,510,977,000. Based on that, on our WADA, on our weighted average daily attendance, we're at 36,000. And our wealth per WADA for this projected school year 2021, we're at 69,626 wealth per weighted average daily attendance. That being said, our total state aid for the 2021 school year is $232,235,445. That is compared to last year's at $242,524,274. We have a decrease in state revenues, of course. That is because our average daily attendance, we have a projection that will be going down for this coming year. Okay, any questions on this page? If not, we can go on to page four. This is something that we've already talked about at the previous work sessions. As you can see, this is the trend of our average daily attendance and our average daily membership for the school year, starting in 2014 down to our projection for 2021. As you can see, starting in 2016 and going into 2017, we've seen a decrease in enrollment as well as in the average daily attendance. And for this coming year, we're also applying the decrease that we've had in the previous years, which is about 2.74% decrease. And we went ahead and decreased an additional 288 because of idea of public schools open in a school within our school boundaries. Okay, any, any questions on this page? Okay, we go on to page five. These numbers here are being updated based on the certified property values that we received, giving us our total tax levy, $35 million. The tax rate being at a dollar 3110, keeping it the same as last year's, but broken down into a dollar 444 for maintenance and operations and debt service of .266. We anticipate a 98% collection rate. Based on that collection rate, we anticipate collecting $34,734,000 worth in taxes. Of course, of that, for maintenance and operations, we anticipate $27 million, $27 million, 670,000, and for debt service of $7,630,000. And here is our ADA, as mentioned previously, and what we applied to our ADA projection for this coming year. The numbers that will be discussed for budget represent the, an increase of 1.5% for all employees based on their job grade midpoint. Okay, debt payments, we have 5.6 in the general fund, $1 million in our debt service fund. But as discussed previously, we have a $5,600 per year per employee, district health insurance contribution. And two items we discussed at the last work session, and they are included in the numbers, it's $1,200,000 for special projects, of which is $300,000 for drainage improvement at Quaddis-Lincoln High School, and $900,000 for to replace four water towers at the Palmview High School. Any questions on this slide?
I know you're sharing information from budget summary three, or from anything that you would like to highlight at this point, because I know you're reviewing a lot of the same pages that you went over with us, but anything you are wanting to emphasize for the reason of readdressing.
Readdress. Okay, of course, you know, the salary increase that we have in our budget, the 1.5, and then you with the additional numbers on the next page. And of course, you know, the 2.7, $2,769,000, $2,769,000 in certified values. Those are the certified values that now we receive from the appraisal district. And of course, the maintenance and operations tax rate, which is totally different from what we had projected previously. But now that we submitted the numbers to TEA, that is the maximum rate that we can charge. Now, based on those budget facts, these are the, how the numbers look like. We have a listing of all the funds that we currently have within our district. Each one of these funds, as you can see, is being balanced, with the exception of the general fund, because we are transferring some funds over to the different funds. I mean, I could discuss one individually if you'd like. I don't want to go in and read every number unless you would like for me to go ahead and read them. But I would like to point out that in the general fund, 199, we are anticipating $224 million. We have expenditures of $224 million. And we have operating transfers out that will be going to the different funding sources here to cover their expenditures. For example, in the special ed, they generate $10 million, but they spend $22 million. So we, the 199 provides $12 million to that fund to be able to operate and fund itself. That being said, in the general fund, we are 17.9, $17,960,000 short. Okay, any, any questions on any specific item here? If not, let's move on. We can move on to the next page. On the next page is the same numbers, but they're broken down into the different governmental funds. We have the 100 funds, which we make references, general fund as a whole. We have the special revenue funds, and we have the debt service fund.
I have the video.
Totals for the district. Okay, and as you can see, one of the things that I do want to point out that $369 million total budget in governmental funds, $186 million is being spent in its direct classroom instruction, which amounts to about 50% of the total budget. Okay, and I mean, that is why we're here, and that is where our monies are going, majority of. Okay? Any questions on, on this slide? Okay, if we go on to page eight, this, these are the same numbers. They are broken down for the general fund. As you can see here, that, here we are with a 17.9. But it's broken down into by object code, the type of expenditure, whether it be payroll services, contracted services, supplies and materials. And as you can see here, out of the $315 million expenditure, $250, $251 million of it is going to payroll cost. $21,943 to contracted services, which on that area, it includes the utilities, electricity and water and gas. Then for supplies and materials, we have $28 million. Other operating costs, 6.9. Our debt service, 5.6, and capital outlay, $1,449,000, given as a total of the $315 million in expenditures. Okay, and we go on to the next page. Here's such a pie chart on page nine that reflects that out of the total general fund, all 100 series funds, 79.7% of the budget is in payroll costs. Okay, that is the majority where, where our expenses are at. In contracted services, we have 7% amounting to $21,943. We have 8.9 in supplies and materials, equalling $28,126,000. Other operating costs of $6,956,000, that's 2.2%, and our debt service within our general is 5.6, which amounts to 1.8%, and then capital outlay of $1,449,000, half a percent of the budget is for capital outlay. As you can see, you know, 80% of our budget is in payroll costs. On the next slide, here is a comparison of the, on slide number 10, it's a comparison of the general fund budget from 2019 to 2020 school year. You can see our revenues, we are projecting $11 million less. Of course, the majority of it is because of our average daily attendance going down. And we have some additional revenues, like for example, SARS, which is a reimbursement for Medicaid services provided to our, to our kids. That we're projecting that lower amount. Also, our transportation allotment, since we are currently, will not start transporting kids, that amount got adjusted accordingly. So that is a reduction in state revenues compared to last year. Expenditures, we, compared to last year, we are increasing our expenditures by about $4.3 million. Our total revenues over expenditures exceeding revenues at 15.4. We have our operating transfers in and transfers out for a net difference here of what we talked about at the beginning, the 17.9 that we are, where expenditures exceed revenues net. Some of the key points that, any questions so far? Not, some of the key points that, what is it that we would like to improve when it comes to revenues and expenditures here? How can we increase more revenues? Well, by increasing our student enrollment and as well as, you know, monitoring our daily attendance. That is something that, as a district, we need to start continuing monitoring our enrollment, following up with our parents, making sure that they that they register with us and remain safe with us. And once they're with us, we need to monitor their attendance, that they do come to school. Okay, the other thing is, we need to monitor our tax collections, especially this coming year because of the fact of the current economic situation that we're in. We need to make sure that our tax collections do come in. What are some of the cost-saving measures that, to, that is the site on how we would be targeting to try to increase our revenue? When it comes to cost-saving measures, this is more targeted on expenditures. What can we do to try to reduce and limit and bring down our expenditures? One of the things that we have here and that the cabinet will be working on very closely together with HR is implementing the staffing allocations that were approved by the school board on June 24. We need to make sure that we follow that very closely, and we make necessary adjustments as, as needed. Another thing is, as when positions are, we, when people resign or retire, that administration will be evaluating those positions as they become vacant and determine whether that's a position that we can not replace. Therefore, it would be a savings to the district. Another thing that we, as administration, talked about and that we will be monitoring with is doing our professional services, monitoring those services and make sure that we keep it to a minimum. And also, try to perform jobs in-house. Okay, this is some of the things that we, as a district, will be implementing and following on to ensure that we are due diligence to ensure that we save ourselves some money, some funds. Any questions on this? Or on anything? Okay, this is our last slide. That concludes my presentation on budget work session number four.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino.
Dr. Science, I just have a comment.
Yes.
I know Mr. Trevino mentioned, maybe when we lose a staff member, not replacing them. Well, I just ask that you please consider the needs, depending on the position that was closed, especially when we refer to counselors. I know that there's a great need, so did we keep in mind what position it is, and if it's direct contact with students, that we rethink that before we close our position.
Yes, and that's, and that's something that I think that everyone in that cabinet agrees that affecting the student is where we would least make decisions to do that. In the staffing plan, we do have the required number of counselors per school. And, and as Joel mentioned, we're going to make sure that we follow that plan so that we do staff according to student needs based on that staffing plan. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have some other information that we would like to present, and Mr. Martin Munoz, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, is going to talk about the next item, which is discussion on additional five days of paid emergency leave for reasons of COVID-19 for all regular district employees. So Mr. Munoz will share that presentation with us. And board members, you also got a copy of that.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Espio Chau, and Mrs. Madam Superintendent, Dr. Rucella Science, and members of the board. I'm going to be presenting on three items that we are proposing for you to consider and to approve. The very first one is an additional leave resolution. As you have previously been informed, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, Emergency Act, provided our employees 10 additional days of emergency paid leave that employees could take in the event that they are having to miss work for a COVID-19 reason. Qualified reasons for our employees to be able to use that emergency paid sick leave would be that a federal, state, or local agency orders them to self-quarantine or self-isolate. So to avoid our employees losing their salary for that reason, they would be able to use this paid emergency leave. Another one would be that a healthcare provider would advise one of our employees to stay home due to symptoms that they might be exhibiting. The third reason is the employee is symptomatic, and he is seeking medical attention. So our employee could go to their supervisor and say, "I don't feel well. I'm going to go to the doctor because I think I have COVID-19," and they would be able to use those days. It's paid leave. The fourth reason is, the employee needs to care for an immediate family member. So they would be able to use those 10 days. And then the last one is, the employee needs to provide child care due to the child's daycare service or school being closed due to COVID-19. So our employees would have 10 days of paid leave that they could use in those type of situations. Now, nonetheless, some of our employees have expressed concern. They're not having additional leave, or once, if our employees were to use up their leave, they're, they're afraid that some of our employees would not self-report to their supervisors that they are exhibiting symptoms, because they're afraid of getting docked. So they would come to work sick and exposed to others. So we're proposing, in a resolution, so that you could consider, of providing our employees an additional five days of paid leave. Now, currently, our employees do receive 10 days of paid leave, five state and five local. They now will get an additional 10 days from the emergency paid sick leave. And so this would provide them an additional five days. So our employees would now have a total of 25 days of paid leave in the event that they have to be absent due to a COVID-19 reason or for any other, other purpose. Now, however, the stipulation would be that, just like the emergency paid leave, that these days have to be for COVID-19 reasons. And that these five additional days be used after the employee has already used their 10 emergency paid sick leave dates. So we would love for you to consider that and approve it, right? This would really help our employees out in the event that they have to be absent for no reasons of their own, that they come into work, an employee is sick, they were in close contact, and they're being told to go home. And this would place a huge financial burden to some of them if they've already had to use those 10 days for other, of having to self-quarantine themselves for other reasons. And this would allow these employees to continue to get paid if we are sending them home or they're symptomatic during those occasions. Does anybody have any questions when it comes to this additional leave resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you for thinking of our employees, Mr. Munoz, and your team.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other surrounding districts are going the extra mile for their employees as we are?
At this point in time, Ms. Ochoa, again, this recommendation was, was recommended by Taspie, right? Because Taspie's been talking to districts across the state, and, and this concern isn't unique to us, right? A lot of our districts are sharing it. I know that Mr. Castillo did mention that some of our neighboring districts were considering initiating something comparable to this. For example, in some districts, they're using an emergency or sick leave pool that employees could tap into. As a district, that is something that the board has already approved, and it's currently available to our employees. This would be in addition to that.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now, as an update to our staffing allocations.
Mr. Munoz, can you, can, we have our board president announce the item for the sake of clarity for anyone that's viewing our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Science. Discussion on 2020-2021 new teacher hiring schedule and salary for teachers, librarians, and nurses.
Yes, ma'am. So just a quick update, and as to where we are with the staffing allocations. So in this slide, you'll see the staffing allocations and the changes that we've had to total number of employees and the salary that we are, I guess, the total number of money that's being paid out in salary to those employees, right from May of 2019 to September of 2019 and to August 2020. So back in May 2019, the total number of employees that we had on staff was 4,262, and the total salary was $194,865,71. In September, after the increase in salary was applied to our employees, we had a total number of employees of 4,291, and the total salary was $208,997,24. Now, we've, we've implemented some of the staffing allocations that there were board-approved. This passed, I think it was in June. So in August of 2020, up to this point, our total number of employees are 4,231, and the total salary is now $203,594,71. Now, we are not including vacancies or part-time employees or FTEs that we went ahead and closed that were not staffed, right? So that would be an additional savings there. So with that in mind, this is what we are proposing in regards to the new teacher's hiring salary scale. And this is, was reviewed by Taspie.
Mr. Munoz, would that be the discussion on proposed salary increases for teacher, nurses, librarians, non-teaching professionals, classified and auxiliary staff?
This would be the new teacher hiring salary scale, Ms. Ochoa.
Okay. Let me proceed.
So what would you see, see on the screen? Is, you would first see the 2019 to district. This is what was, what we were using for new teachers to the district. So zero-years-experienced teacher for getting $50,000. And, and then you see the scale moving down by experience, right? So starting salary for a zero-year experience teacher was $50,000. For a teacher that had 20-plus, it was $61,757. So our proposed adjustment that you'll see there is that we moved this hiring, new higher salary scale for zero-years-experienced teachers to $51,000. And it would go from $51,000 down to $61,767 for teachers that have 20 years or more. Now, there are some equity adjustments to teachers that have one-year experience, 12-years' experience, 14-years' experience, and 20, so that the, these teachers would earn more than the new teachers coming in, right? Because if we apply the 1.5% increase to the market median, which is $57,382, a teacher with one-year experience would be at $50,860, less than a new teacher coming into the district. So what Taspie does is they add additional equity adjustments to those scales that might not be reflected accurately or would not be compensated fairly, so that the scale changes. And now you have a teacher with one-year experience earning $51,500, like $500 more than a new teacher coming in.
And any question? How do we compare, you know that I've always advocated for all teachers, but I always think about our veteran teachers. How does that compare our district to other districts? I know you said there's adjustment being done, but how do we compare to other districts?
Yes, ma'am. In the next slide, in that graph, you see a graph that Taspie put together for us, where you see a comparison to other districts and to the pay scale that we had last year. The orange line that, or rather, the blue line that you see there is the market median, right? That is where our neighboring districts are paying their teachers across the area. The orange line is the current salary scale that we had for this year. The orange line is the current salary scale that we had for this year, being that zero-year experience teachers would be getting 50,000. The green broken line is a new proposed hiring salary scale that we would implement with that 1.5 increase and the 51,000 initial hiring scale. Right, and as you can see, that broken line, which is a proposed, is above the market median and even more so when you get to 15, the 15-year mark. According to Taspie, that is the most competitive hiring group. That is the, the group that most districts would compete for. And in that area, we're way above the market median. And in the next slide, you will see how we compare again with the market median in the, in the five-year period, the 10-year experience period, the 15-year and the 20. The first column is the market median. The next column is the proposed hiring scale with the 1.5. And then we also wanted to highlight the average salary of a La Jolla teacher with 1.5% increase. Now, the average salary is different from the hiring scale because you factor in years of experience with La Jolla and how these teachers have benefited from prior raises that you as a school board have approved. So a teacher with five years that, that was here in La Jolla has benefited from those raises that you have given in the past. Their average salary is 54,483, right? A teacher with 10 years' experience has been here in our district, the average salary is 57,244. A teacher with 15 years' experience is at 61,469. And a teacher with 40, 20 years' experience or more, the average salary is 64,147, right? So as you can see, we're, we're above the market median. And our teachers that have experience and that have been with our district have been rewarded with previous raises that have, that have placed them way above the market median as well. So any questions?
Mr. Munoz, I'm just curious, like in the rest of our employees, like our bus drivers, our custodians, how does that work?
Well, in this instance, you, you will see the next, once we talk about the hiring scale. It, it varies. For example, last year, when the, when it was approved, our auxiliary staff, our ministry staff, our instructional support staff, they, they were, they had a 6% increase, right, from the, the previous year's salary. So it, it varies, Ms. Hernandez. This year, for those employees, we are proposing a 1.5% increase from the medium salary scale, right? So depending on what that pay group is earning, we look at the median salary and then they, they get that 1.5% increase. And we can come back and provide you with that information, Ms. Hernandez. So you can see how the salary increases have affected those employees as well throughout the years.
Okay, so pretty much, let's say we have an employee that is making 13 dollars an hour. So we're just giving an increase of about how much, Mr. Munoz?
For those employees, Mr. Auxiliary Staff, we look at, if you recall from our previous presentations, there's a minimum salary scale, a mid, mid-salary scale and a maximum salary scale. We look at that group and we look at the medium salary scale. What is the average salary scale at the median midpoint? And then we multiply that by that 1.5 increase. And then that is applied to that employee's salary, right? That becomes their new salary. So it will vary by employee, Ms. Hernandez, right? But the increase will affect all accurately based on that medium salary compensation that plan that we have.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Munoz.
You're welcome, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our last item of the discussion of the proposed salary increases for teachers, nurses, librarians, non-teaching professionals classified and auxiliary staff. You may begin, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, ma'am. So on your, on this screen, you'll see the employee salary compensation plan. And we are proposing, what you'll see there is what Taspie presented in regards to the 1.5 general pay increase. You see how it affects the different groups of employees that we have, our teachers, librarians and nurses. The administrative education group, the administrative management group, the support for administrative and instructional and auxiliary staff, right? You see the total number of employees that we have and what the cost increase is going to be. So if, if you agree with the 1.5% increase, the total cost estimate that will come into effect moving forward would be 3,212,619, right? If you agree with that 1.5 increase.
Mr. Munoz, I know we had the opportunity for the last couple of days as, as board members to speak to our administrative staff and our superintendent in regards to our pay scale and our, our pay raises. We do understand that the district right now is, right now enduring some hardship as all districts are as a result of COVID and having to encumber a lot of extra expenses when it comes to our distance learning and hazard pay and stuff of sorts that we've implemented. And also with the additional five days of leave that tally up to 25 days of paid leave for somebody that's sick. And we understand that all of those things come with a cost. I'm very happy to say that administration has gone and assisted us as a board to find, see where's any way we could go ahead and somehow increase a little bit of our, of our teacher pay rates because we understand that they have unforeseen costs also related to COVID and the global pandemic that's going on right now. And we want them to know that we're, we're here with them. We understand that it's not easy, that it, it's tough all around. And as much as we'd like to give a huge, huge, huge raise and be able to take care of them, I, I think we did a good job with what we presented here and addition with what we're going to propose to show them that we're here with them and they're not alone. With that being said, I'd like to see if, you know, the board can take it under consideration. So with administration to have an increase from, instead of the 1.5% to move to a 2.5% for our administrative support, our instructional support and our auxiliary. Also with that, our teachers have a projected raise that was proposed in the last workshop of, I believe, $860, which was 1.5%. If the board would consider going at least to $1,100. If we could do $1,100, we feel that that would keep us also in the top end of where we've always been. And we're very proud in the compensation in comparison to everybody in our region. We want to be able to ensure that our staff knows that they're valued, they're cared for and that we're going to continue what we started and ensuring that we're the best compensated district in the area.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, what Mr. Lasso was saying, I'd like to add that I know that we came in in 2016. I know that, that one of our priorities has always been to make sure that our, our, our district is well taken care of. And I think every year, been in it, we've given a good amount of raise. And, you know, just to integrate a little bit of what he said, you know, we need to expect any of this coming into March. And I know it's, it is a lot, it is very hard. But I, I don't see any difference this time around. I think as a board, we all, you know, want what's best for, for our, our, our staff. And I agree with the, with the numbers that were given right now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that would conclude my presentation, Ms. Choa.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you.
That we will adjourn at 5:40.